I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Burgess here, Nelson here, Green here, Smith here, Sullivan here, Walden.
Here.
Alright, next we need a motion to approve the minutes of the March first twenty twenty-three council meeting. Have a motion to approve those?
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Alright, next we have a motion to approve the payment of the bills as they appear on the work sheets. I'll wish you for that.
I'll make the motion.
We have a second. Okay, Suzy, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes. Alrighty, up next we have public comments on agenda items. Anybody have anything you want to say before we get started? No, you can say some things at the end. Alright, if not, we'll go to communications from the mayor. First off, I'd like to thank Dana, Darren, Jack, all of the city employees for the hard work that they put in after the storm on Friday. They were out there picking up limbs, helping people that had lost power.
The jams and all.
Which, exactly. Donnie was, you know, had some damage too, so he got some assistance firsthand from it, so thankful for that. And then also the employees that were out Saturday morning. And then, of course, over these last couple of days, been out picking up the limbs. So I really want to say thank you, you know, for all the hard work they've been doing. And then also, I want to, you know, thank everybody for getting out voting yesterday. Also, have a great Easter as well, you know, since I'm relaxing, going to family and going to services and such. That's essentially all that I really have. It's going to be kind of a long meeting, so we'll go ahead and get started for the city attorney.
And I really don't have anything to just communicate other than what will come up during the items on the agenda, so I won't put any more down.
Alrighty, city treasurer, you got anything? Alrighty, alderpersons, you guys have anything?
I just have one question. Are there any updates from the March meeting of the daycare, for the daycare?
No, I, there isn't. So Kimber Village is working on that daycare to be ran through the Methodist church. They were going to be applying for a grant through the state. The state ended up pushing that back to the, ended up pushing it back to the end of March, and I have not heard anything.
It's been pushed back to April now.
Till April now, okay, so they're, they're gonna have it, but no. I did talk to the neighbor. I saw her out, told her if she had any issues with their band-aid here next door, and she said no, so.
Yeah, that's all I, that's all I got on that.
Alright, city clerk, you got anything?
Nothing.
Alrighty, on to new business. Well, go ahead and get started. We'll have the discussion on a school resource officer. I've invited Dr. Dee Heck to the school and also Chief Hale from Malikua to kind of talk about this. So you guys have the floor if you want to come up and talk and go from there.
I get nominated first.
Okay.
My name's Chris Hale. For those of you who don't know me, a little background, I served twenty-six years in Decatur. And after retiring from there as a detective, I got contacted by our mayor and I started down in Malikua. So I've had a little bit of experience in law enforcement over my career. Part of the time that I worked, I worked as a school resource officer. I feel it's a very vital function within our schools. It gives our kids exposure, it gets people connections and builds relationships with law enforcement within our schools. And I'll be frank with you, in today's society, the number one thing that I think they're there to do is protect our schools and keep people safe and make sure nobody gets harmed. So we've been working since probably close to a year now, Dean. I've been talking off on, on a little bit about how we wanted to do this. We've gotten ball rolling with both of our boards, both of our boards are on board. So what this would look like if all three were participating would be probably a third, third, third split. We're estimating right now it would probably be sixty-seven thousand dollars to fund the officer insurance and whatever else we need to fund. So with mid-sixties, you know, probably being the highest, that would be my guess. So if it's a third split, it would probably be twenty-seven thousand dollars between this municipality, our municipality, and the school district. The school function for the officers would be present, be there before and after school, handle any issues that are law enforcement related that need to be handled. School functions, we're not going to get involved in. So if it's somebody needs an attention, that's not a police issue. We shouldn't be involved in that. But we should be there to be at lunches, establish rapport with the kids, work with the kids. If the kids have an issue, say there's something in home life going on, something that they know is going on in their community and they need to report to the police, that's what we're there for, is to establish those relationships. We're going to set it up as probably a nine-month program. So the person who's working it would be played through the police department year-round, but to cover insurance and such. But we would make it a nine-month program, so we would, we're still working out details on how many hours we need to do, but then they would be able to cover football games, basketball games, anything else, any other events that are special events that you want law enforcement at between the two schools. So we've kind of worked out fine details on that. There's a couple other little things that we'll do before that. We will more than likely start advertising next month. I have one officer on my department who is interested, which is Justin Johnson. And I think he would do a fine job. We'll still advertise outside. I know a few people in Decatur who also have a good bit of time on and they may be interested in coming down and serving too. So we'll see who we can get that is interested. Right now it is a hard time to hire law enforcement officers, but I think with offering it as a nine-month job, where they'd be off in summers, especially if I can pick up a retiree, that would be a, I mean, if I was in that position, I would take a nine-month job where I get summers off, so. Any questions that you guys have that I can possibly answer, but?
So I have to talk to Brian about this, Brian's on vacation. You know, one thing that we had talked about is if we get him for a third, you know, we would kind of like them down here a third of the time, at least, you know, every other day we would like, right, down here at the school.
I can't speak to how that's going to work. That was going to be more something we'll work out with the school because they're in charge of where they're going to be. So yes, you're funding it at a third, I can't say that we'll be exactly down here.
Yeah.
Something may happen where we're down here more than a week. Something may happen that we need to be up there more a week. So I, you know, we'll work that out with the school because they're going to be logistically having the people who are going to know where we're going to need to be at.
I think that, that's very common in this school. You could ask Courtney Hyer, if she, she may, in one week she may be up at Malikua most of it.
Yeah.
Or in another week she'll be down here most of it. So I think it just depends on what's going on at the school. But, but I see it being pretty balanced overall, yeah.
I know there's a lot, a lot more details that's probably going to go into this, but so would it be, does this officer working forty hours a week in the, during the nine months?
They'll probably be working more than that because they'll work football games, they'll work other special events. So we'll factor it into being a nine-month job at X amount of hours, which would cover the forty hours a week, and then whatever special events needed to be covered that we estimate would come up during the year.
And so this is for sixty to sixty-five thousand a year? That's insurance, so that's?
That will include our insurance, everything against, yep, yep, yep.
Okay. And then in the three, in the three months of the summer, what are the, what would the expectations be of this officer?
Well, we're not going to have any expectations at that time because they're going to be done on their contract. Our other expectation would be if they want to cover vacation for my guys that we have hired, you know, that sort of thing, then we'll pick them up and we'll pay them in Malikua for that time that they may work, or if they work some extra time. Say it's Christmas break, school's out, they would be off. If one of my officers is on vacation and they're willing to come in and work those vacation hours, then we pay them for those things. So that wouldn't be anything on you guys' dime, that would just be through the village in Malikua.
So they would, would they be required to cover sports events? Or is that like football and things like that, that would be an environment?
Yeah, that, that would be part of the job description. That's why we're going to build it in, so many hours that we estimate they would need to do.
Now, there, there's no way they could be at every event.
Right, right.
So you would go, they would go to the ones that we assume there might be a problem. And we have several of those, like football is, is, it doesn't seem like it, but there's always something going on in football. And basketball games, especially the, you know, high-powered ones, those often become volatile. Parents get a little, you know, rammie, I don't know what else to say. But anyway, yes, that they would be expected to. That graduation, anything where there would be a lot of people and a lot of.
I believe you guys said state for middle school, some games down here, so we work those hours out too, stuff like that.
So your yearly, so the pay, let me make sure I get this right. So the nine-month pay would be sixty, call it sixty-five thousand dollars. So prorated out, that a year would be an almost ninety thousand dollar a year position.
But we're not making it a nine.
But it's the equivalent, if you're paying sixty-five thousand dollars over nine months.
But if you think about it, they're going to work more than a forty-hour a week.
We're expecting extra hours put into it.
It really is, it really is, ends up being almost a twelve-month job. So because of the, because of the extra hours they will work during the nine months.
Because the initial, or at least the only, I mean, because we kind of came in this very late in the game, I feel. So when we were told about initially, this was going to be a year-round position and the person for that salary was going to also work as part-time.
Yeah, we were kind of told that. And to be, well, the thing is, this has been going on since about October, then it kind of died down and then it kind of got, got brought up again. But there was talk through our committee, it was like, well, if we got somebody, then it could also be a part-time cop, similar to what you have just mentioned.
Now, this will be a salary position, so they're going to have a set amount of hours that we expect they would work, but they'll cover the other events. So that will be the nine months, so their salary on that. If we need them to work in the summer or anything else, then that will just be on our village. So there's not like going to be an overtime involved or anything else, that's why we're establishing it for that. So it wouldn't be a ninety thousand dollar a year job because it's a salary position, it's going to be set for that rate.
Similar to a teaching position, right?
That's, I mean, that's completely different than what we were told at finance just last week. I mean, so that's, because it was, from what I understood, it was a twelve-month position at roughly sixty-five thousand for the twelve months. And when school was out of session, they were going to be two-thirds part-time officer for the city of Malikua, one-third for the city of Assumption.
Well, no, I don't.
During the summer.
I don't know where that portion come up because it's never been discussed that they would work down here. It's just been discussed that this person would work in the schools. And any additional time that we need them to pick up, we'll have them pick up and we'll pay that on our dime in Malikua.
Or I would assume that they'll, they'll come down here and work.
You're saying they do.
Yeah, you guys, yeah, they want to work here part-time, I'm, I'm not a dog in a fight, you know, that would be perfectly fine. Especially if you guys need to cover vacations, you know, that would be something we can comfort them and have them, you know, negotiate that portion.
I definitely think there's a need for it.
Well, so when, when would you like it, I mean, so we're working on budgets, so we'll basically have a budget in place at the next meeting in May. So I mean, I know when Dee Heck and I spoke, choosing in August, I would have somebody. I mean, we could do it a lot sooner than that, of course.
Well, we'd like to have that set in place, so I think our board will probably vote on it in May.
Our vote board has voted to move forward, so right now we're ready to move forward with them. We're trying to figure out if you guys are going to participate. Because that, that's just where we're at, we're going to move forward with this, it is going to get done. And then once, I'm ready to start probably taking applications in May. I want to be able to have somebody in place, if there's extra training somebody needs and anything else that will cost us summer months, we can get that stuff done and have somebody ready to be in schools day one, soon as school starts, they're there.
What we'll definitely talk about this month.
There's actually a couple of questions, I believe, man.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
So, so who are, who would they be responsible to, who would be the boss?
They'll be under Malikua Police Department.
Okay, so they're going to be, all orders come from out there, so.
Correct. And then they'll work in either school that whoever needs.
And I'm, I'm a little late in the game here, but why does the city, why is the city responsible for the school? We get state funds for everything at school and we have a school budget. Why, why does the city, why does the city pay for part of this? I, I don't understand.
Every place would.
If we were to hire them, I have no knowledge of police law, none. I have a lot of knowledge about school law and I can tell you what we need to do. But if I have a policeman in my building, I don't know if they're doing what's right or what's wrong or anything. So that's why we are working with them, and I think that's why Decatur does it this way. This is, this is just generally how it's done.
Yeah, any, most, every department that I know that has school resource officers in it, in whatever function they do work in the schools, it's usually funded in some portion by the school, some portion by the police department. It's done that way, the state doesn't pony up that money, to be honest. I mean, they'll, they'll pay money to protect our politicians, but they don't pay money to protect our kids, which is frustrating, but, you know, that's neither here nor there, but we can't get that money dedicated. I'd love to see that, that would be outstanding. I think it would, it would be the best case scenario.
And I'm all, all about this, but I do not think one is enough. I, I don't like the split car, I guess, and I think Assumption needs to be, I, I don't think that'll ever work. I think it's too, too strung out.
If Assumption decides to hire their own and do their own, I, I don't know if the school district, you know, we'd have to work on funds. I know we can't hire two more and provide two more cars. We're, we're going to have to hire, we're going to have to pay for one more squad car.
Well, if the school work comes in, they can find one, I mean, they can get them out. You take your priorities up here, you take whatever down here, you move them around, that's how budgets work.
It does own the budgets.
That's why, okay.
So something I can answer to you.
Yeah, so with that, since it'll be a nine-month thing, but it can be kind of like with teachers where they can choose to get paid in the summer, so it's a cheaper, I guess, monthly expense coming out of the budget than sixty thousand over nine months, to where that way they're still technically drawing a paycheck in the summer.
Well, probably, I mean, that's how I would want to do it.
Yeah.
And that's kind of how we've discussed it, is that they would get a set paycheck year-round to cover that and then that way they would be covered on insurance and everything else. That way we won't have any hang-ups with an insurance company that's only working nine months because I don't know what they would say.
Yeah, and then like, I know that with, because I drop off kids at the school, I know that there are some days that Brian's, there are some days that he's not, so that could be where they could communicate to say, I'm not going to be here. So, but Malikua can have somebody there, but we can't, so when we're down here, but that's where we're going to, everybody's going to have to communicate.
And we try to do the same at our school. We work really well with Chief Wade, we've worked really well with PJ when he was here, all of us communicate. I'll be honest, that's how we rely on things down here. You know, we don't have a ton of cops, so everybody has to help everybody else out. We all call each other, we all communicate all the time and talk about what's going on, so that part won't be a problem.
Then Malikua do a, it's like a contract or anything at school?
There is a contract with the school district, yes.
Working on that, okay. So then we would be a part of that.
Yes, then we would have to add that, that's the hoops that we'll have to go through with the lawyers. So I'm sure everybody will have a little bit of input lawyer-wise on what they want to change on things.
I would like to say, to your point, I've had several people make that same comment, that they feel like there should be a police officer in both buildings. We don't disagree, it's just the, the cost of the vehicle and, and all of the other stuff, you know, that, that goes along with it. So, I mean, as you guys discussed, it may be something you want to talk about as well.
Agreed, but, but you can't put a price on.
Safety.
On safety, there, there is no price. And I just appreciate that.
If you have, say, an officer here, I mean, and an officer there, would there be any for an additional vehicle per se? Like if they're assigned, because, you know, your buildings are joined, if they're assigned to that building, like, you know, if we're sharing it, we, we obviously need a squad car to come back and forth, but say, we're going to have.
Squad in case they need to respond to anyplace else, if they have an arrest, you're not going to want to take an arrest key in your personal vehicle.
But could they then, could they then contact? I'm just trying to think, if, could we cut corners? Is there a way to do it where maybe there could be one here in Assumption? And without a squad car, and then say they need to transport something, somebody, they call, they call, they call Brian?
Potentially, that's what I have a question about, that is a potential.
Because squad cars are kind of pricey.
Yeah, they are, but.
We've bought a few.
Yeah, we're going to hold off on ours.
We're getting ready to buy another one, so we're going to wait that hold, so. Is there anything else I can answer for you?
I think so, we'll, we'll run it through while we're talking about it, the police committee. And then we also have a finance committee, and try to get something for May on the agenda for you.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My apologies for being late, I have to do an interview.
That's okay, I'll come to your meeting, be late. Alrighty, up next, we have an alderman, Susie Burgess is leaving us. She chose not to run again, so we have done a congratulatory resolution for her. So I'm going to read it. Whereas the city of Assumption, Illinois wishes to congratulate Ms. Sue Burgess for her time as War Three Alderperson for the city of Assumption. Whereas Sue Burgess was elected to the city council on April second, twenty nineteen, and sworn into that office on May first, two thousand and twenty-twenty-one, for a term commencing for four years. I'm sorry, it should be nineteen, twenty nineteen. Whereas Sue Burgess was appointed by Mayor Dust to serve as Parks Chairman of the Parks Committee for the city of Assumption, as Vice Chairman of the Assumption Police Committee and as a member of the Assumption Water Committee. Whereas it was during her time as Parks Chairman that Alderperson Sue Burgess oversaw the renovating of the Assumption City Park, the renovation of tens of thousands of dollars to improve the park and the lives of every person who enjoys it. Whereas Alderperson Sue Burgess took the initiative to oversee many of the projects herself and add many ideas to improvement of the Assumption Park. Whereas Sue Burgess had a great understanding of constituent services to assist not, just not her ward with issues, but all wards of the city of Assumption. Resolved by the people of the city of Assumption and the city council that we congratulate Alderman Sue Burgess for her four years as an Alderperson to War Three and as the Parks Chairman for the city of Assumption. So you're welcome, thank you for your time. Need a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Alright, you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Alrighty, up next, we have a motion to approve reimbursement for supplies for summer recreation. We did this last year, basically, I'm sorry.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash three.
Twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, okay, yes. That was twenty-twenty-three dash three on that resolution. Alright, we all good?
Got a board?
Okay, up next, we have the motion to approve the reimbursement for supplies for summer recreation. Last year, we had just agreed to pay for everything that recreation had turned in in way of receipts. And I think it was last year, it was like around five hundred dollars, is what it was.
Fifty-five hundred, I don't think they exceeded it.
I don't think they exceeded it, no.
I think it was up to five hundred, but not exceeded, yeah.
I don't think they even hit three fifty, it wasn't.
Yeah, do you want to do it, just do five hundred, okay, so we can do it not to exceed five hundred dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Alright, you have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes. Alright, up next, we have a motion to approve materials for a deck at the park. And Angel, if you want to talk a little bit about this, kind of what your idea is for the end of the month?
So on April twenty-ninth is Conners Day, and we chose to clean up Assumption. So now it's going to be cleanup yards or cleaning deters or whatever, inviting town, needs done. And they had talked about wanting a deck at the park, so we said if the city would apply the materials, then we would build a deck at the park for Conners Day. So I went to Lowe's and got two bids, one for composite decking and one for the wood decking. So I'm just here to see if they want to.
Yeah, and the.
Which one they want to do and we're going to build along the twenty-nine.
As you well know, the comp decking is a little bit for, just by about two hundred dollars for the wood decking. The comp decking is, is a little bit, it will last a little bit longer, is that correct?
Well, the guy at, the Ryan that I talked to at Menards said it would be the best because then you don't have to worry about splinters or have to worry about ceiling it or you paint it or whatever, chipping or, there won't really be any maintenance to it.
Maybe with the composite decking. I would definitely go with the composite.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Is this the, is the front page the picture of the, the deck?
Yeah, that's the size that we received from Joe.
Will, will it have, does it have railings or anything?
No, and it won't be high off the ground, so it's going to just be, you know, it's a little bit off.
It's a fantastic square, even a wheelchair could just roll right on it.
They just want something for the kids to, yeah.
Just something to jump over.
Yeah.
Kind of like a stage for the.
So if you guys like the one with the comp decking, you can make a motion to approve the build of comp decking.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Are you guys bid over there? Alright. That's fine.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Alrighty, up next, a motion to approve the mosquito spray for fourteen hundred dollars. This is, skeeter season is coming up upon us, so do you need a motion to approve that, please, for fourteen hundred dollars?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes. Alright, next we have a motion to approve the survey fee of a thousand dollars for the pathway. This is dealing with the putting of the sidewalk over by GS, I'm sorry, Dollar General, getting a kind of line depth to see where the pins are, so that we can start putting it on the sidewalk within the next couple of months. So skeeter, motion to approve that, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Alright, next we have a motion to approve a fourteen-foot by twelve-foot door for the street shed for fifty-nine hundred dollars. We did have a bid from Reader Doors and More. It's actually, it's for fifty-six hundred, Darren was actually able to get down to that. He did ask that we do put it for fifty-nine hundred, just in case anything changes between now and then, but he believes it's going to come in at about fifty-six, twenty-five, so do you need a motion to approve that, please?
I'll make the motion, alright?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan. Walden.
Yes.
Alright, next, we have a motion to approve the purchase of mulch for the city park from Stillwater Mulch Incorporated for two thousand three hundred and forty dollars.
I'll make the motion.
You alright? You have a second?
I just have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Did we just get one bid?
We actually, I think we had two, but this was the best one.
Yeah, and this is a company that we've always used, it has to be a special kind of playground mulch. And they've always been real good, every time we've gotten from them before.
I think the other one was like five thousand dollars.
Did we get any quotes in Christian Kelly? This is, these guys are out of economy.
More discussion? Roll call please.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Alright, up next, we have an ordinance number seven-nine-two, and this will be for, ordinance for littering in the streets. So some of you can remember, we kind of talked about this, it seemed like maybe over, maybe about a year or so, it got on a different kind of table a bit, because we went with state law and blowing up the grass, grass clippings on any of our streets. Well, we have had some problems with some individuals in town that say, well, you don't have an ordinance, even though it's state law exceeds the, whatever ordinance that we have. So what we're doing is just codifying our, our ordinance go in with state law, so that blowing the grass clippings in the streets is, uh, illegal. Anything you need to add, or?
No, I, uh, I took the form of the ordinance you had from several years ago, basically just incorporated that language into it. It, uh, included citation from, from, okay, it very specifically does refer to grass clippings in the street. It is one of the items that are prohibited, but no reason not to have those ordinance violation as well, so.
This will follow the nor, the ordinary, uh, ordinance.
Yeah.
Warnings.
Exactly, basically, we already have it for the curbed streets. And if you guys don't live on the curbed streets, we're still blowing their grass out and we've, we've gotten after them. And, uh, they're like, well, you don't have anything in ordinance against it. So, uh, we're doing it now, so hopefully before, you know, mowing season really starts getting, getting heavy. And we'll advertise this on the, uh, Facebook, just so people know. Alright.
On the Assumption website.
On the, the website too, yeah.
Can I get a copy of it for the paper?
Oh, okay, yeah, you sure can.
Jan, what's the ordinance number?
Seven ninety-two.
Yeah, seven ninety-two. Alright, we have a motion to approve that, ordinance number seven ninety-two.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any more discussion? Roll call please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Alright, up next, we have a motion to, uh, purchase, uh, tires for the water truck for twelve hundred dollars. Do you need a motion? I don't, you know where they were going, I didn't make it to water, it was, you know where they were.
Is there a bid in here?
I think you want the big ones and two breeds.
He said they were like right around the same price, that's why he told me on the phone, but I didn't make it. Well, anyway, we have it to where it won't exceed twelve hundred dollars, so. Do you need a motion to?
I'll make that motion.
Alright. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Walden?
Yeah.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed? Nelson?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Alright, up next, we have a motion to approve to amend the contract with Chastina Associates for lead service phase one. Does anybody got anything you wanna add to that?
Uh, just making note, um, this is closing out next month. Uh, this amendment is for fifteen thousand more dollars for construction. However, it does fall under the I E P A loan, which you received a hundred percent forgiveness, so you'll be reimbursed that full fifteen.
Perfect. Do you need a motion to amend the contract with Chastina Associates for lead service phase one, please?
I'll make the motion.
Alright, thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Alrighty, up next, we have a motion to approve the execution of the TIF Amendment contract. This is gonna be in a series of things from Jake Moran, um, of Moran Associates, so do you need a motion to approve that, please? Do you need a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve that. I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Burgess?
No.
Alright, up next, we have the motion for the adoption of the feasibility resolution tip. Now, this is what came in, that was talked about, uh, last council meeting, uh, however, it was, came in at the time that we couldn't put it on the agenda. So do you need a motion to approve that, please?
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash four?
Yes, twenty twenty-three dash four, please. So this one is.
I make the motion.
I'll second, you got a second? Alright, any discussion? Roll call please.
Burgess?
No.
Nelson?
Uh, yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Alrighty, up next, we have the motion for the adoption of ordinance establishing interested parties registering and rules for TIF. Okay, so this is just a bunch of series of things that we're going through, and this is ordinance number twenty twenty, uh, I'm sorry, seven ninety-four.
Ninety-three.
Or ninety-three, I'm sorry. Seven ninety-three, ordinance number seven ninety-three.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Any more discussion? Roll call please.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan? Yes.
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 Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Alright, next, we have the discussion review of the TIF feasibility study. So we did the resolution for it, now this is just a discussion and review. Um, I don't think we need to take a vote on anything of it, it's just, you know, we have it for the record and, uh, in the minutes. Up next, we have a motion to place the feasibility study on file for ten days and to approve sending the TIF feasibility study to all affected taxing districts. This is our, I don't think it is approved. Do you have a motion to approve the, uh, placing of the feasibility study on file for ten days?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Burgess?
No.
Alright, up next, we have the mo- motion to approve the adoption of the redevelopment project inducement resolution. This would be resolution twenty twenty-three dash four, I'm sorry, dash five, twenty twenty-three dash five. And, uh, this acknowledges that the housing project, it basically says that all costs incurred will be TIF eligible. Uh, this will allow you to keep all costs eligible which are incurred prior to formal adoption of the area into the TIF district.
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Burgess?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Alrighty, next we have a motion to approve the following from Sanitary's Phase Two dispersment, Petersburg Plumbing, eighty-two thousand five hundred and seven dollars and fifty-six. You think you need to add seventy, just injecting times. Cause you've got it from here, you, you have it from here on out for a while. Alright.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, thank you. You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Sina, roll call please.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Alright, next we have a motion to approve engineering invoice number six eight eight six for sanitary sewers phase two for six thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars and seventy-two cents.
Do you need a motion? Do you need a motion to make, person? Second, second.
Oh, this is Travis. Okay, we'll do a roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Uh, uh, we are gonna go back just to state for the record that the, uh, we do have to place the feasibility study on file at City Hall for public review for a period of at least ten days, as well as send the study to all affected taxing districts in accordance with the requirements of the TIF Act. So we do have to say that, so.
Actually, there is a motion.
The mo-, well, but we did do the motion right here.
Yeah, that's true.
Alright, moving on, we have a motion to approve engineering invoice sixty-nine sixty-three for the water phase one of four thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. This includes both lead and non-lead.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Alright, next we have the motion to approve the engineering invoice, seven six four four point zero zero for water phase two for three thousand three hundred forty-three dollars. Motion to approve that, please.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Susie. I'll second.
Thank you, alright. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Hold on, I'll just say the C P F application Jan and I were finally able to fully submit.
Oh, good.
I know. We rejoice, three weeks ago.
I know, you've been working on it to like three months.
There was, uh, we were the guinea pigs for how they were going to do this, essentially. So they created the process as we were going through it, which is always fun. But it is submitted and they're reviewing it, we did get word that they're reviewing it, so. Hopefully, this will get that water treatment plan built now.
Good. We also need to kind of have a check too. Alrighty, motion to approve the engineering invoice, seven six four four point oh one for water phase two, water mains for eleven thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-six.
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Alrighty, up next, we have the motion to approve the engineering invoice, seven six four four point oh two for water phase two, lead service, two thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty cents.
I'll make the motion.
Alright, thank you, very thank you, hearing Susie. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?